Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting. It's Tuesday, June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. We will start with the pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation from Pastor Brian Rice, Christ the King Lutheran Church, forty-three oh eight South Forty-second Street. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm also a resident of Bellevue, and I gotta tell you, personally, it is great to see projects that I know have been long planned and have been labored over, tirelessly come to fruition, like the widening of the Thirty-sixth Street project. There's the new developments that are happening around the edge of our town and improvements like those to Stonecroft Park. I think it, it, those things don't make national news, but I think it shows that we have a healthy city, and I'm thankful for the people who work for it and people who lead it, and it's in that spirit that we pray. Good and gracious God, on behalf of all who are gathered here today, on behalf of all who live in our community, we give you thanks for the many and abundant blessings you shower upon us. We give you thanks for life itself, for the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance and for friendship, and we thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We lift up to you, our mayor and our city's officials, and in particular, this assembled council, and we ask that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting issues and entrance interests of our time, a sense of welfare and the true needs of our people, a thirst for justice and what is right, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. We ask for your blessing upon those who serve Bellevue in many and various ways, though often much of what they do is unseen. Bless them with pride in its significance. Bless them with patience and encouragement when they receive the frustrations of others. We pray for the agenda set before this council today. Let good judgment rule all, rule all decisions. Let what is decided tonight be that which would please you and benefit those who work and live in and around Bellevue, and it's in your most blessed name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Rice. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Rip Susan, could you take a roll call, please?
Councilman Stinson.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilman McCaw.
Here.
Councilman Preister.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Here.
And Councilwoman Welch.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where this item is unless otherwise removed. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Burns, second by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. It takes us to item seven, special presentations. We have none this evening. Number nine, approved citizen communication. We did not receive any. Item ten, liquor licenses. We have none this evening. Item eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. Eleven A, ordinance number four zero three eight, an ordinance to reflect pay ranges for employees of the city that are covered under approved collective bargaining agreements and those positions that are unclassified. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero three eight, an ordinance of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range schedule, providing for publication in pamphlet form, repealing ordinance number thirty-nine ninety-seven, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Councilman Burns? I'm sorry, Councilman Cook, I looked right at you and. It's like dyslexic, isn't it?
I'll make a motion. We approve item eleven A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing, second reading. Twelve A, ordinance number four zero three nine, an ordinance to amend Article One, Chapter twenty of the Bellevue Municipal Code by adding a new section twenty dash fourteen regarding the use of certain medians being prohibited. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero three nine, an ordinance to amend Article One, Chapter twenty of the Bellevue Municipal Code by adding a new section twenty dash fourteen regarding the use of certain medians being prohibited and to provide an effective date.
Thank you, and I will open up twelve A for public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wanting to speak regarding ordinance number four zero three nine? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Third reading will be July sixth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading. Thirteen A, ordinance number forty forty, request to rezone lot one, three seventy square replat six, being a replat of lots one and two, three seventy square replat four from BG to RG eight P S for the purpose of multifamily residential development. Applicant is Sage Capital LLC. General location is Thirty-sixth Street and Lexington Avenue. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero four zero, an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Thirty-sixth Street and Lexington Avenue, more particularly described in Section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. That second reading and public hearing will be July sixth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Item thirteen B, ordinance number four zero four one, to make unlawful and set a penalty for those charged with violation of city ordinance, being issued a citation and who failed to appear or refuse to appear in court and give the city attorney an avenue to obtain a warrant for defendants who continuously or repeatedly fail or refuse to appear in court. Susan, would you read that ordinance?
Ordinance number four zero four one, an ordinance to amend Article One, Chapter twenty of the Bellevue Municipal Code by adding a new section twenty dash fifteen regarding failure to appear and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be July sixth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Item thirteen C, ordinance number four zero four two, an ordinance to amend Chapter seven of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to bicycles. Susan, would you read that ordinance, please?
Ordinance number four zero four two, an ordinance to amend Chapter seven pertaining to bicycles by amending Article One, Section seven dash two and repealing Article One, Section seven dash one and section seven dash eleven and Article Two in its entirety and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be July sixth, two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A, request for a conditional use permit for lot ten Nob Hill for the purpose of caregiver services to independent seniors. Applicant Gloria Pettigrew Fletcher, location twenty-two oh eight Virginia Avenue. And I will open up fourteen A for public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against fourteen A? Please come forward. Looks like you have it down, but please state your name and sign in.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gloria Pettigrew Fletcher, excuse me. I am the CEO and the founder of Sisters with a Purpose In-Home Services. I have been providing care for seniors within their homes and in their facility over ten years. Our goal as caregivers and contractors is to provide atmosphere that is a home setting for seniors who choose not to want to enter into maybe assisted living or into a nursing home. Our goal is to provide twenty-four hour care service with a rotating staff, one per client, which would be technically three or four clients within the facility. I specifically purchased this home at two zero zero eight Virginia Avenue for the sole purpose to provide care for seniors. This is something that I find sheer pleasure and joy and is extremely rewarding to be able to provide care to seniors within the Serpice County community. Coming into a service like this and an atmosphere of seniors, senior care. My mother, who was in a nursing home, had passed away December the fifth, two thousand and twenty due to COVID. Me being not in the state of New York, being able to go and spend her final days with her, it took a toll on me. I don't want any seniors or anyone to have to go through anything like this, what I experienced. The care that we want to provide is to allow family to be able to come in into a home setting where we just build a network of a family unit, where we would do activities together. We would provide games, we would provide all meals, we will be transportation to and from doctors. I also have different services that I have been working with over ten years that are willing to come in and provide care for my clients that I have currently already. So my goal is to be able to be a blessing to within the community of our seniors and also within our surrounding area to be able to give the seniors another option or another family members, another option other than going into a nursing home or assisted living where they can come and spend their time with us, and we provide one hundred percent of service and care for them. As far as parking, there is at least six, seven stalls that they can utilize within the parking area of the group home. We love what we do. The contractors love what they do. They see the vision. They believe in the vision, and so we work together as a community to provide all of the services that we possibly can within this community service. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody have a question for, okay, Councilman Stinson?
How many employees are you gonna have working at one time?
It would be one per shift. It would be a rotating shift with one floater. Technically, by state of Nebraska, when it comes to being able to provide care, it's one caregiver per six clients, and technically it would be three or four clients within the home setting.
Okay, you're gonna have like cooks there and things like that too?
We provide all meals. I will pick up all the necessary food. We have a meal plan already set for. This is something that I've already been doing within homes already. So the only difference is now I have purchased a place of, of my own in order to provide all of those services. We cook, we do grocery shopping, we take them to all of their plans, meetings, with doctor's appointments, whatever need and services that they need, we provide that for them.
Okay, in reference to your parking and stuff, visitors and stuff coming into it, you've, I drove by there yesterday. You've got probably enough room for four cars in that driveway. If you've got three or four people in there, visitors are gonna have to park somewhere and also deliveries to your place. I understand you're gonna go pick up the food, but there'd be other medical deliveries and things like that that are gonna need to take place that could potentially block the streets while they're delivering things?
Well, I, I, I see that as no different within the home setting. If there is medical equipment needed to be provided, everything is scheduled. Everything would be on a schedule need basis where we won't overcrow the street. I do have an extended driveline that I have one car there and two more cars can park there. Also, there is a garage, one single garage, and then two cars after that. This is why I said up to six or seven cars can park freely in the area.
That's all I have. Good. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Eric. I love your energy. I love, you know, taking care of our elderly. I guess where my thing is, is that it's like, it's putting a business in a residential neighborhood, and I know you're taking care of people. But part of my concern, I, I used to live there. I used to live on Nob Hill Drive, which is be the street down towards Fort Crook. And I will tell you that Pleasant View, or I'm sorry, Virginia, I'm looking at this map. Virginia is probably the busiest street that cuts through there because it goes down to Fort Crook, and you go north or south, there's a medium break, so you can go north or south. So a lot of people use Virginia to either come up from Fort Crook or to get down to Fort Crook to say maybe move on to go to work. I can tell you, now it's been several years since I've lived there, but I can tell you the hundreds of times that I have driven down Virginia. I can tell you, it, almost every time it was very, it was a challenge for the fact of all the parked cars. I mean, a, a lot, I drove, I've drove by this home probably four or five times since it was put on our agenda. There was about seventeen homes from Fourth Street going towards Fort Crook. About six of them have two car driveways, but a lot of them are just, most of them are one car driveway leading to a garage. Some of them have added a second drive, but not all of them, and, and my concern is, is when you have two or three or four drivers in that home, there's a good likelihood that two or three of those cars could be on the street, especially if there's a lot of coming and going. Parking's a lot on the south side of the road with mailboxes, and your house is on the north side of the road with obviously more, more mailboxes, but what I'm, I guess what I'm trying to say is I think when you're talking about caretakers and bringing in therapists, nurses, who's gonna mow the lawn, who's gonna scoop the snow, does that mean a, you know, who, I, I just think there's gonna be a lot of, I think there's gonna be a lot more traffic than me and my wife and two kids living in a home on that street versus you bringing in people to take care of people. And part of my issue is, and it, it sounds crazy, but let's say it's a holiday like Christmas. Well, if you have four people in that home, what if their families want to come and visit? So, so they're not related, they're not, it's not like my family with my wife and two kids where maybe, you know, we'd go over to my parents' house. You would have four adults there looking at all these holidays and birthdays that you could very po, very possible if they had family around here where maybe, you know, family members and friends would want to come to your location to spend a few hours or the day with them. I, I, I just think your business is gonna put a lot more traffic on that road. I, I honestly believe that. I, I think it is a lot different than a family of four living, say, next door to this versus running, and I'm gonna call it a business 'cause no one lives there full time. You, you know, like a daycare, maybe the family that runs a daycare, they live at that home, they might have help, but their big traffic is in the morning, say, six, seven o'clock in the morning, kids being dropped off and leaving, coming back at maybe six, seven o'clock in the evening to pick them up. I, I just think a business like that brings a lot more traffic to that neighborhood, and that is a very busy street. What, what we're looking at is you're requesting a conditional use permit, so it's because it's not allowed there, and you're asking us to make the exception. And we probably have areas in the city that the zoning would already allow this, and maybe it'd be more appropriate there. And I, I, I don't want to sound all negative, but I used to live there and walked up that street and drove that street hundreds and hundreds of times, and by far, it was a worse street for traffic up there. And I think a lot of it was 'cause you could come up from Fort Crook or go down, and you could work your way up to Bellevue Boulevard, which gives people access, you know, maybe four or five blocks to get to their home. I think that car wash, when I lived there, that car wash was a gas station when, and, and a car wash. Now they changed it over to a gas station, and we always have cars lined up out on the street trying to get in there, and I gotta believe a lot of them will come up Virginia and go through the neighborhood, maybe either coming or going to that car wash. So my big thing is the traffic, and then obviously with traffic, and you have kids, other families that have kids, kids running, riding bikes, taking walks, are there maybe, would maybe increase some safety issues. That's pretty much, and I, I know there's, I know that at our planning board, there was discussion about a daycare. I think it's different. I, I truly do. Families live there. They come in the morning, they pick them up in the evening. It's not Saturdays and Sundays. I think you would have a lot of in and out traffic, and I could tell you with my kids, when they were driving and we had four cars, you know, I would tell my kids, park your car on that street because I'm not jogging, jo, you know, moving around cars every time I wanna get in my car to leave. And if you, a worker parks in there, then if I'm relieving her, I'm not gonna, or him, I'm not gonna park behind her in the driveway. I'm gonna park on the street 'cause she wants, he or she wants to leave to go home, and then if time allows, I can pull my car in. So I, I don't see a lot of stacking of cars, especially if you say you got a therapist, a nurse or someone that's just gonna stop by and maybe deal with one of your clients. I think that's an hour or two there. I, I, I would highly suspect they would maybe park on the street when they know they're just gonna walk in there for maybe an hour to, to do their business.
Okay, well, thank you for your concerns. There is an additional parking where the staff would park there. Where there used to be an RV there from the original owners, and they had a daycare there also. And yes, they had people coming and going there, but there's an additional parking area where staff would park over on the additional parking area, and you still leave room for three other cars and one additional car to come in. And yes, there will be a shift change where staff will, one will leave, and no one would park with, on, on the streets. I think there are several ways into Virginia Avenue would be the group home. If you're coming from Fort Crook, yes. You pass the gas station or the car wash, yes, there's a lot of traffic. But there's other ways, at least two other ways that you can get in to the facility without having to come through Fort Crook and come up to Virginia or leave Virginia and go to Fort Crook. So I think there's, there's other options. All we can do is present that, you know, to the staff and also to the family member. Currently, none of my seniors are driving. No one would have transportation. We would be their transportation. So we won't have to worry about another senior being out there on the street at that age, between eighty-two and ninety-nine, which is the, the eldest client that I've had to take care of within their home. So I, I think we can work with that with an understanding, with communication to the family, and just work to try to make this work. That, that's my, my thoughts.
And, and I, 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 I like what you're doing. I, I, and I think the service is needed. My big hangup is, my hangup seriously is just being in a neighborhood. I, I just think it's just gonna generate, if, if I'm a speech therapist or a, I, I know, you, you mentioned some people.
Speech therapy, occupation.
I think if I'm gonna come there, you know, it's probably gonna be from a distance. I'm not gonna turn in the neighborhood four or five blocks away and work through the neighborhood. I'm gonna, if I come from Papillion, I'm gonna probably come up Fort Crook and come up Virginia to get the house, probably park on the street 'cause there's already two or three cars maybe in the driveway and come in and do my business. I, you know, if, if, the grass, I know that's once a week, the snow, we don't know how often that's gonna happen, but there's other services where you'll be calling people and, and how do they park and where do they park their vehicle? I, I will tell you, a lot of those homes have a garage, one driveway leading up to a single car garage. And now some of them have added on.
Thank God we don't. That home doesn't have just one.
Well, you, you do have a single car garage. Someone has added that driveway, second driveway, and it goes along the driveway too, so it does go, or to the garage. So it does go very deep. But I don't want to be parking there and have three cars in front of me where I gotta move 'cause my shift is over, gotta ask them to move their cars for me.
The P T and speech and nurses that I have services with, everything is on a scale, a scale as far as needed basis. We will have a nurse come in every Wednesday, as we have done in other facilities once a week to assist and service the clients there. P T is all about scheduling. I do that right now for my clients that are to a husband and wife client. This is what I do already.
Sure.
So scheduling isn't a problem as long as you're presenting to the services that you have.
They need services. I'm not disagreeing with you. Again, it's just the in and out, the people up and down. I, 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 my background, I'm a retired policeman, and I used to live in a neighborhood, and I will tell you by far that is the busiest street of my recollection of when I lived up there. And I have driven by it about three, four times since this was put on our agenda 'cause I wanted to go by different times of days just to see vehicles and the parking and all that stuff. And because I really wanted to come here and be fair and, and be honest with you to say, my hangup is the movement of traffic, and I think the volume. I think on like a Christmas, if you had three of the families out on the floor that say, we wanna come over and spend time with the person you're caring for, you know, you'd almost have to say, well, you come over for these two hours, and then the next group can come over for a couple hours for the different families and stuff like that. And, and then when you talk about the different professionals that come in, that's all time. It's all bringing the car in, parking, going in, doing my business for an hour or two and leaving. You're gonna have shift changes with staff and stuff like that. I, it, it's just, I don't know how everybody else feels, but from my personal opinion, it's just the volume of traffic that I think will be increased, and, and we, we don't allow these, well, our current zoning, our zoning doesn't allow these in neighborhoods for a reason, and we're here today looking at to try to make the exception. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Gloria, do you have, do, do you own the house now or do you have a purchase agreement on it?
Since September of last year.
Other questions? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gloria, my heart goes out to you because.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Gloria, my heart goes out to you because, uh. You know, my mother passed away several years ago, and we weren't battling COVID, and I thought, I wondered what it would be like if I wasn't allowed to. To be able to be with her during that time, so that's, that's a really tough thing to do. I think what you're asking for. Is an excellent idea. You mentioned that you have other, are, do you go to individual houses now?
Homes and facilities.
So it's not just one house that you're going to now, you're going to how many different houses?
Seven different places.
Seven different houses. And so you go to this house and you're bringing. The meals or the care or whatever, and then so, one other person, so it's not seven people all in one house, it's. Seven different houses across the metro area. Okay. I know that, um. Uh, Tammy, I'd like for you to, I need to pick your brain on this. I know that that was, um, something that. You denied, but the, the com- planning commission approved. Can you talk about that a little bit, please?
The zoning ordinance requires with a conditional use permit, there are several standards set forth in Article Six. Um, before the city council is to approve a conditional use permit in any zoning district. Several of those standards pertain to, uh, not having a negative impact on the existing neighborhood. The use not negatively impacting the current environment in that neighborhood. Um, in the staff report, I outlined many of the concerns that Mr. Cook just expressed. Just with the twenty-four seven operation, um. The current situation of the neighborhood, you have homes built in the mid-sixties, uh, those homes are. What I would say on, you know, the smaller side, average eight hundred square feet to twelve hundred square feet. Most have single car garages, single car drives, some people have added on to their driveway, so they will have a double drive. Parking on the south side of the street only, everybody has a mailbox. Um, like Mr. Cook, I went to the neighborhood on two different occasions, just to kind of observe. The, uh, conditions and the parking and the traffic. I was there on a Monday morning. Probably about eight thirty to nine o'clock, and then I was there on a Friday afternoon, um, probably around one to two o'clock. And in that neighborhood, street parking is heavily utilized both of those times, um, the street was fairly full with parked cars. Um, so that's my concern is just what that would look like and how that would impact the neighborhood. And Virginia, yes, is a busy street because it is a connection to Fort Creek Road. And not all the streets in Nob Hill obviously have that connection. Um, that was, that was my. What I looked at upon making the staff recommendation. There was a lot of discussion at Planning Commission. Obviously, uh, Ms. Pettigrew Fletcher has a very good business plan, has a very organized business plan. She's been doing this for a number of years. She came very well prepared, she's licensed, um, she's taken all the necessary steps. Um, to be prepared to run this type of business. Um, Planning Commission, a lot of the discussions centered around traffic. Existing condition of the neighborhood, um, it was a six-two vote to recommend approval. I think the folks that, um, thought that it would be a good idea for approval. Looked at it maybe no differently than an in-home daycare or similar home-based businesses. And thought that the impact would be minimal enough that it would not, um, it would not negatively impact the neighbors. Um, so there's a lot of discussion in regards to that. We also at Planning Commission had discussions about, you know, further restricting Ms. Pettigrew Fletcher. I wouldn't want to do that to her. Uh, I think either you folks are comfortable with the use or you're not. Um, you know, we don't wanna limit her to the number of staff that she needs. Obviously, the needs of her residents would be varied and changing, and we can't predict that, she can't predict that, so. Um, there was a lot of discussion surrounding conditional use permit agreement and potential, um. Rules and regulations that could be placed in that agreement, but ultimately, nothing additional was recommended in that regard.
Okay, um, that's all I have at the moment for you, Tammy. Um, Ms. Gloria, I, I think what you have is a. Fabulous idea. Um, Ms. Palm said great things about you when I called to pick her brain about this. Again, I think it's a great business opportunity, I just, I think it's the wrong location. And I, I think there's a better location for you to provide a very serious need that is out there. And we just need to help you find a really good location to make this happen. That's all. Thank you.
Any other questions for Gloria? Council, Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. You've already purchased the house, you stated. Uh, you've made your plans, you're organized, you, we've heard good things tonight. Should the, the members of this council not approve this? What's your option? What, what, what happens then? What, what happens to these people that you've already got planned?
They would either have to stay where they're at or find another location. Technically, I already have three people. Who are wo- ready to move in, and they're my potential clients that I already take care of, my count clients that already take care of now currently. Who wanna move into the facility. I'm constantly being asked, when are you gonna have it up and running so that we can move in? Um, I just let them know it's a process. I gotta get through a process in order for this to take place. Um, if, my heart would be broken, to be totally honest, this is a dream. Something I planned and budgeted for, for years. Because I knew immediately when I got my certification, and I took care of my mom after she had a stroke, this was my goal. I love the senior community, and I wanted to be able to. Provide a loving home, safe area, full of services. And a family setting. So if there's a denial. I have the home, it'll be my home. I live in a home already, so I would have two. The option would be to sell it. Or to rent it out.
But you also knew that when you bought this home, that it was a risk to be able to do this, correct? Because nothing was.
Selling concrete.
Correct. And, and, uh, sometimes Plan A doesn't always work out, Plan B does. Sorry to interrupt, Councilwoman Prester.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. The public hearing is open, so if you just hang tight, uh, when we get to discussion, we may have some more questions, so. Um, I'll ask if there's anybody here to speak for or against. Fourteen A.
Do I just write on here?
Yeah, just write, uh, write your name and address and then state your name.
Just on the black card? Um, my name is Ashley Denton. I live at twenty-one O two Virginia Avenue. So the very, the house right next door to her. Um, I have several things that I wanna say. You guys have been talking about the negative impact on the neighborhood, so here I am to talk about why I think this is a fantastic idea. And not an issue at all. So I wrote just a few notes down while you guys were talking. So the very first thing is, I used to work at the Veterans Home in North Fork, Nebraska, um, for about ten years. Um, I was a CNA, a MedAid, and then when I moved to Omaha, I worked at Hillcrest Home Care as a hospice aide and a home health aide. I loved both of those jobs equally. Taking care of veterans was probably the best thing I've ever done in my life. Doing home care and hospice care was better. Being able to go into someone's home. And provide that care for them in a home setting is so much better than any nurse in the home. Can ever provide, ever. Um, watching and meeting Gloria for the last year, I love her. She. We've lived in this home for eight years, she's the best neighbor that we have ever had, including that stupid daycare that was next door to us. Um, there is a lot of street parking, thank you. I was so confused. Um. Um, shoot, sorry. So there is a lot of street parking in that neighborhood. Um, she does have seven spots in her driveway. There was someone who previously lived there that put in another driveway. There was the biggest RV I've ever seen in my life in that driveway, along with them parking four other cars. Um, I do not see the parking being an issue. Um, my husband and I have talked about it, we have not even told Gloria this. We're not home during the day, she can use the four spots in our driveway. Um, if that's what a concern is, don't care, she can use it. We are never home during the day. Um, when we're home at night, she can still use the added parking spots. We only have two cars, we have a dra- or we have a garage. That leaves her three parking spots. So if she has six or seven, that gives her nine or ten parking spots that she can now use. Um, you guys brought up the car wash. Every single time that I've made a complaint to the Bellevue Police Department. About that car wash and the traffic that is horrendous there, I have been told, use a different way into the neighborhood. So if Bellevue Police Department is gonna tell me that, then that shouldn't be a problem. Um, the parking is literally one house. So if that's just them, and it's not during the daytime, it's at nighttime when they come home from work. And I can't imagine she would be having a ton of people there at nighttime. Again, parking would not be an issue. I don't spend holidays at my house, we go to all of our relatives, Christmas time, she can use all the spots in my driveway. Um, that really eliminates the concern for parking if you're asking me. Um, Gloria is a fantastic person with a fantastic idea that this city needs. Um, it would be a shame for this not to, um, be voted in favor for. Um, I have heard a lot of negative things on it, so I really hope that you take my thoughts as a neighbor. And someone who's lived in that neighborhood for eight years and hates that car wash with a passion, but I'm still all for her business. That you would take that into consideration other than the times that you have driven through that neighborhood. Um, that's for all I really have to say, but I'll end this now.
Thank you for co- coming out, Ashley. Is there anyone else, uh, wishing to speak regarding fourteen A? Please come forward. Okay, seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing on fourteen A. And so we can go into discussion, I'll need a motion. Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve the conditional use permit for Lot Ten Nob Hill. Item fourteen A.
Motion by Prester, second by Burns. So, okay, now we can have discussion with the. Council members. Um, I, I wanna start off the first question. I know there are numerous, um, group, I guess you call them group homes with dis- disabled, I'm not sure if Tammy or Bree can answer this, but. I don't ever recall getting a special use permit for those properties.
This topic also came up in Planning Commission. Um, I've been here almost seventeen years. I can tell you during that time, we haven't had one. To my knowledge, with old records, we have not had this type of request. That's not to say that they don't operate in the city. Um, but they may not be licensed and they would not be operating with city permission.
Cuz there are some good-sized companies that have numerous homes they operate with three to four, up to four.
Any of the ones that I know, um, that are licensed have come through the city, they've all gone through the rezoning process. They're typically in an RG twenty type zoning that allows for this use as a permitted use, so. I'm not aware of any conditional use permits in the time that I've been here or any past ones that have been approved.
Interesting, okay. Thank you. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tammy, uh, don't get comfortable. Um. Tell me, cuz we've gotten a lot of information, tell me again why you. Denied this specifically. I wanna make sure I'm real clear in my head.
Sure, I, I recommend a denial just based on the conditions in Article Six. Again, there's about nine specific conditions. That are laid out in the zoning ordinance that a person must meet in order to gain approval. In my opinion, I didn't believe that those could be met. Again, several of them have to do with, you know, not. Not having any kind of negative impact to the neighborhood as far as traffic, congestion, um, overall environment. That was my concern, so my recommendation was based solely on Article Six.
So in your opinion, if this was on possibly a different street. That article might not have pertained to, but is it because of the amount of traffic on Virginia?
Case specific, so, you know, I think if you had a different situation, you were on a collector street, you had parking both sides. You had, uh, you know, two or three car driveways that were standard in the neighborhood, um, you had less congestion. Yes, I think you could potentially have a different situation.
Okay, thank you.
So if there was a complaint against one of the other group homes that are out there existing, they could actually be shut down then? If they did not get a conditional use permit?
Potentially, yes, that could be a code enforcement issue that would follow that process.
Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Tammy. Uh, I may let you just sit down and not call you back up. W- we have a situation where a very, as we all saw, dedicated and. Loving person has decided to open a business, and I think that's a great idea, especially for people in care centers. We've heard nothing but good things. What impressed me equally is that we have a neighbor. Who comes up with a creative solution to a parking issue. And for neighbors to work together is in the spirit of Bellevue and our whole country. So I appreciate that spirit. I hope you're going to live next door to each other for a long period of time. So that that can continue. But seeing a potential solution. To, uh, what was pointed out is a very real issue, uh, for me. I made up my mind and I'm gonna support it. So I appreciate the creativity and I appreciate the option. For making something happen. In this case, unlike others that may not be legal. You're taking all of the steps, being very organized, doing everything by the book, by the law. And putting your faith in the hands of six people, maybe seven. So I appreciate that you're doing it the right way, and I believe that if you're doing it now the right way. You'll continue doing it the right way, and so I'll trust that that will be the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Gloria, I think it's a, a great idea. I think you're a phenomenal human being. I think you have a heart of gold. I think you also knew that when you bought this house, that there was some risk involved in it. And as our planning director said, if it wasn't for Virginia Street, we may not have an issue. I am concerned about the amount of traffic that is on that street, and yes, that car wash does. Provide quite a bit. Um, whenever I use that car wash, I always go up Virginia Street. And sometimes it's clear sailing and sometimes it's pretty congested. And I'm just really concerned that this would add to that congestion, so. I, and I trust what our planning director says. I mean, she knows the city as well as anyone. And, uh, again, I think you're a fa- fabulous human being, a great idea. But I'm, I'm thinking I can't support something like this just based on the concerns that have been presented at this time.
Any other comments or questions? Um, certainly, a comment I don't have to make, but, uh, it could come down to a tie, it could come down to a four-two, it could come down to a six-o, who knows? But I, I think it's unfair sometimes that, uh, somebody doesn't know where the mayor stands on it. Um, I think, uh. I think the concerns that were discussed here this evening are legitimate. Um, I commend you on doing everything the right way, cuz, uh. I don't think anybody else is doing it. Um, but I, I can't support the location. If it was another location, maybe. Um, but it's gonna, it's, I'm gonna take a look at what's, what else is going on in the city as well. So anyway, that's, I guess that's where, where I'm at on it. Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion by Prester, second by Burns. Please vote. Please vote.
Okay, we've got, um, it's two to, two to four with, uh, two voting yes, four voting against. Uh, with Mr. Stinson, Mr. Cook, Mr. McCaw, and Ms. Welch voting no. Motion denied.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you for coming out. Takes us to item fifteen, Resolution Fifteen A. Resolution number two zero two one dash eighteen, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to open accounts in the name of the city of Bellevue to sign and endorse checks and orders for the payment of money or otherwise withdraw or transfer funds on deposit with the financial institutions and authorize mayor to sign. Councilwoman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion. We approve agenda item fifteen A.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item fifteen B, Resolution Number two zero two one dash nineteen. Moratorium on act, on acting upon applications for any permits, zoning approvals, or zoning changes for any proposed solar plants and any related power generation facilities and authorize the mayor to sign. Councilwoman Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve item fifteen B as read.
Second.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Cook. Comments or questions? Councilman Prester?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I see a moratorium on solar and it piques my interest immediately, which will be no surprise to anyone. And so having gone through what we have in the city, when we rewrote our building codes about six years ago, six years, five years ago, anyway, we redid them. And I know in the solar addition, one of the things that was proposed by the company who really didn't understand solar, they just understood zoning and building codes. They proposed that any solar, uh, any solar whatsoever within the city of Bellevue would have to get a permit. To most people, that might, might make sense, but if you look at some of the applications on my house where I have a solar light lighting the driveway, it wouldn't need to have a permit. When the city has applications on power poles or when there are ones on the speed limit signs, there are a host of small applications that would really take up a lot of time and wouldn't need to be there. So that was changed. It was taken out. There were some other ones, but I'll just use that one as an example. My point being, we do want to have zoning. We do want to have things in appropriate places and I support that. But I want to make sure that we have input from people who understand solar and not just people who understand zoning. So Ms. Palm, if I could ask you a question? Cause I think you'll be dealing with this at least to some degree. Uh, are you open to working with the utility? I mean, this just applies to the utility scale, although it's not spelled out, but the only real utility we have that does or is likely to do solar is OPPD. And just ask your response if you can do that.
Yes, and obviously any text amendment will go through the public hearing process. It'll go before Planning Commission. Obviously come before city council, so it'll be a process like any other text amendment.
Okay, but you would be working with them in the process, similar to the way Mike Christiansen did with the builders who were here before us when we were changing those, uh, building codes, correct?
Correct. So yes, any, any input we would obviously take into consideration. I can't stand here and say that we're always going to agree with all of the input that we get, but obviously, yes. Um, you know, the planning department is willing to work with those folks.
Okay, and that's my issue. I want to have some input at the front end rather than just a response at the back end. Because discussions can take place in, in a, uh, way that's different at that point.
Right, and obviously through the public hearing process, there's that opportunity too for anybody. Um, so that would be the purpose of having those public hearings for the text amendment. So the city can get feedback from a number of individuals and, and companies.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And we're not having a public hearing, but there is a representative here from OPPD. Would it be appropriate to ask a question?
You'd have to do a motion to open it up for a public hearing.
I would then make a motion to open for a public hearing.
So we have a motion by Prester, seconded by Burns to open it up for a public hearing on the solar. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Okay, it's been opened up for public hearing, so if there is anybody here wanting to speak regarding the moratorium, they're able to come forward. But let's start with, uh, Councilman Prester's, uh, selection.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, Council. I appreciate the consideration. Um, Michaela Valentine is here and Michaela, if you would just introduce yourself and, uh, who you represent.
Michaela Valentine, Government and Community Relations Manager for Omaha Public Power District.
And thank you for being here. Obviously some interest. Uh, could you just walk me through the permitting process and what kind of timeframe we're looking at? If we do a three-month moratorium, is that enough or more than enough time to address the city's concern first?
Based on past experience in, um, Washington, Burt, Saunders, and Cass County, that should be plenty of time. I've already talked to Bree, Annie, and Tammy and sent them some, um, just, just some regulations that other counties have passed so that they have a good starting point. So I do think that three months is an adequate timeframe. There'll be multiple versions of drafts that will be gone through. And OPPD as a community partner is happy to play a role in advising on technical expertise. And we can do that from the individual solar panels that go on the houses, all the way up to utility scale solar. So we have an engineering team that's available to provide comments, um, just so it's what you want it to be for the city.
Good. And I took advantage of those technical, uh, expertise people when I put the solar at my house and it has worked well. This, however, doesn't address that in my understanding. This is just for utility scale, which is much, much bigger and would have a bigger impact, so.
Right, and what we've addressed in the other counties have all included utility scale solar. So, um, we're happy to provide technical expertise on that to the council.
And that was my next question, which you've already answered and the city is willing to, uh, solicit your concerns and you've already done it. So I'm, I'm feeling much more comforted at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from anyone? Thank you.
I would just make a statement from the executive branch that, uh, the moratoriums aren't, usually aren't good for much, but, um, so we will exercise, uh, we'll work out at a steady and, steady and fast pace, cause nobody wants that sitting out there for a long time.
And I appreciate the three months. It could have been six, it could have been a year, but three months, I think, is kind of pushing our plan.
Any other comments or questions? Pu, public hearing is still open. Anybody else wishing to speak regarding fifteen B? Seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Now, are there any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion by Welch, seconded by Cook. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Takes us to item sixteen C, approve and authorize the city council president to sign the twenty-twenty CDBG sub-recipient agreement with MRH Land LLC for the First City Tavern Improvement Project in an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. And I have a conflict, so I will recuse myself and turn it over to council president Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just for the record, the mayor has left the, uh, chamber. Do I have a motion? Councilwoman, uh, Welch? You're gonna put me on the spot.
I make a motion that we approve item sixteen C as it was read.
I have a motion by council member Welch, seconded by council member Stinson. Is there any discussion? Here and then let's vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Takes us to item sixteen D, recommend approval to place a metal roof over a portion of the existing dock at American Heroes Park in an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Cook. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Item seventeen is the administration reports. Uh, those are given at the first meeting every month. The mayor report will be attached to the June first council packet. Um, eighteen, we have no closed session and I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. Councilman Burns?
I move to adjourn.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Prester. Please vote.
All voting yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Everybody drive safe. Thanks for coming out.